Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
I would like to nominate Alex Hirsch for the position of president or as the chair of this committee?
Chair.
I'd like to second that.
Excellent. I'll do a roll call vote. Member Solpezio Holt?
Aye.
Member Alcala?
Aye.
Member Hirsch?
Aye.
Member Perez? Mr. Hirsch, you are now the chair and you may take over for nominations for the vice chair.
Thank you, fellow board members, for the nomination votes. At this time, I'll open it up to vice chair. Is there a nomination?
I would like to nominate Mr. Perez.
There's a nomination, Mr. Perez. Is there a second? I'll second. So we have a nomination and a second.
Member Solpezio Holt?
Aye.
Member Alcala?
Aye.
Member Hirsch?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Perez. We'll move on then to item two, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the authority. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment?
We had no request to speak.
In that case, I'll move on to the consent agenda. File items three and four, are there a motion?
I'll motion to move the consent agenda.
There is a second?
Second.
Member Solpezio Holt moved, member Alcala seconded, member Solpezio Holt?
Aye.
Member Alcala?
Aye.
Chair Hirsch?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez?
Passes. Moving on then to item number five, public hearing in consideration of Resolution 24-1 of the City of West Sacramento's enhanced financing district.
Good evening, Chair Hirsch, members of the board. I'm Tracy Michael, Director of Economic Development and Housing. And this item includes a public hearing on EIFD number one, Infrastructure Financing Plan, or IFP, annual review and annual report. And upon closing the public hearing, consideration of adoption of Resolution 24-1, which formally approves the annual review of EIFD number one, IFP, and adoption of the annual report. And I have just a few slides to go through for this item. So next slide, please. Thank you. Just by way of background, we're going to talk a little bit more about this in the next agenda item. But the EIFD number one district boundaries include fourteen different sub-districts that cover about a quarter of the city's area. These areas included in the EIFD were all previously included in the former redevelopment agency area. The revenues that are generated through the property tax increment collected within the district boundaries are a result of assessed value increases over time. And these assessed value increases are typically generated by growth. Vacant land gets developed, land gets renovated or expanded. Or you might have property sale transactions that generate an assessment and that increase in value in this district area comes in the form of EIFD tax increment revenues. So I just wanted to clarify that these are not a new tax on property owners. They're the result of growth and the resulting increases in assessed values from the base year of 2017 when the EIFD was formed. Revenues from the EIFD may be used to invest in infrastructure and other public facilities that induce and leverage further private investment and growth. The EIFD is also eligible to receive tax increment for forty-five years from the issuance of a bond or loan, which is another item being considered by you later this evening. And so this is part of an annual requirement for us to come to you and have this hearing. Next slide, please. State law requires a public hearing on the Infrastructure Financing Plan, the formation document, and the annual report. The recommended action includes the PFA Board having a public hearing on the review and the annual report, and following the closing of the hearing, adopting Resolution 24-1, which is included as attachment one, approving the IFP annual review and the annual report for fiscal years 2019 to 20 through 2000, from 2023 to 2024. Important to note that this is the first time we're bringing this action to the board. So this annual report includes, it actually includes information since formation, but as we move forward, this report will focus one year at a time. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, let me, a few more things. For the IFP review, there is an opportunity annually to consider amendments to the IFP. This could be an interest in adding new territory. It could be looking at dollar limits allocated to the plan. It could include potential changes to the long list of projects that are included as an attachment to that IFP. It's a pretty involved process, and we have a very long list of projects that need funding, more funding than probably we'll be able to realize. So although amendments can be considered, we're not anticipating any in the near future. The annual report contents include a description of the projects undertaken in each fiscal year. You'll notice that there's not a lot of information in this particular report because we really haven't spent EIFD money to date. So as we move forward and consider other actions this evening, we'll have more activity funded with the EIFD funds and more reporting to include in the annual report. Thank you. Next slide. For this fiscal overview, as I mentioned, we haven't spent any EIFD funds to date, so the report is fairly simple. This table is included in the, in the report, and it summarizes revenues and expenses. Really goes back to 2017, 18, but the annual report requirement was triggered in 2019 and 20. And 2021, 22, based on limited annual EIFD revenues, additional time that we needed to prepare all of the information that's being considered by you this evening, and a need to fund regionally significant improvements. All tax increment funds collected at that time were deposited to the Measure G Fund, which I'll touch on a little bit more in the next agenda item. This offered us greater project funding flexibility in the interim while we prepared for several of the other action items being considered by you tonight. Next slide. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that this board conduct a public hearing on the IFP annual review and annual report, and following the closing of the hearing, adopt Resolution 24-1, approving the IFP annual review and adopting the annual report for fiscal years 2019 to 20 through 2023, 24. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment regarding this item?
We'll need to open the public hearing.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing unless any board members would like to speak first. Thank you very much. Let me open up the public hearing.
We had no request to speak.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council and close the public hearing, bringing it back to the authority. Do any of the authority members have any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to move the staff recommended act?
I will move.
We have a motion by authority member Alcala. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by authority member Solpezio Holt.
Member Solpezio Holt?
Aye.
Member Alcala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez? Chair Hirsch?
Aye. All right, item passes. Thank you very much. Moving on then to item number six, consideration of Resolution 24-2 of the City of West Sacramento's enhanced infrastructure financing district.
Me again. Good evening. This item does have two actions for your consideration. Adoption of Resolution 24-2, which approves both the debt management and budget policies for the EIFD, and adoption of Resolution 24-3, which approves the EIFD budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. So as a reference, next slide, please. Map again of the EIFD area. Next, next slide, please. Go right into it. Thank you. EIFD eligible uses. Just a little more background about the EIFD as we get into our debt management and budget policies. EIFDs can fund a broad spectrum of improvements as prescribed by state law. This includes purchase, construction, expansion, improvement, or rehabilitation of facilities, as listed here on this slide. Improvements can be located in the district. They could also be located outside of the district if there's a direct benefit to the district. So a good example of this is if a water tank is located perhaps just outside the district boundary, but it's serving residents within the district. That could be an eligible use. I also want to just highlight the asterisk item, the maintenance. EIFD funds can be used for maintenance as well if it's related to a facility that's EIFD-funded. Next slide, please. Projects financed with EIFD funds must be deemed to be of community-wide significance, as stated in the EIFD Infrastructure Financing Plan. Projects funded with EIFD revenues must be consistent with the general plan, which is our guiding document for establishing the vision for future change and growth in our community. When budgeting EIFD revenues, the council and the authority must find that expenditures have a community-wide benefit. Consistent with the general plan vision, and EIFD-funded projects will implement related city studies and plans. And this is a really good example of how that works. We have our general plan that has land use and zoning and a mobility element. And then we switch gears to a specific plan. This is the Bridge District specific plan, which has more information on the road network. And then the capital improvement project is the extension of Riverfront Street. The projects that align with the general plan, the specific plan, and a capital improvement plan like this would be eligible for EIFD funding. Next slide, please. Thank you. In 2012, the council adopted the Community Investment Action Plan, which was really the city's approach to community reinvestment in the face of the state's dissolution of redevelopment agencies across California. The primary author of that plan is our city manager and emphasized the need to continue investing in infrastructure and economic development to catalyze private investment, to improve our local economy, create new revenue for the city, and enhance residents' quality of life. Next slide, please. Based on that action plan, the EIFD funding goals were developed and highlighted here. Generally speaking, it's about assisting with infrastructure investment gaps, providing a stable source of revenue for capital investment, leveraging private investment, supporting land assembly and environmental cleanup. A great example of this is our Grand Gateway Master Plan area, where we've spent years assembling property, doing site remediation, building infrastructure improvements to support new development, leveraging outside funds such as state and federal grants, which we are, have been very successful, have a strong track record of doing, to use in conjunction with other local financing revenues, such as community facility districts or other assessment districts in the city, supporting adaptive and creative reuse of existing real estate assets, inducing private investment where otherwise might not occur, and supporting those projects that have community-wide and regional benefit. Next slide. The EIFD IFP identifies a long list of facilities that are eligible for district investment. Facilities that are included in the list are broadly categorized into the categories listed here on the slide on the left. Transportation, roads, trails, bridges, light rail, parking facilities, water sewer drainage improvements, city buildings, park and recreation amenities, and economic development projects. And they're great examples of, of projects on the right-hand side that would be eligible, fit into these categories. As I mentioned earlier, too, that there is an opportunity through this annual review process with the previous item to revisit that list of facilities. Amendment does require a public hearing process that has to be approved by the authority, and any updates must continue to meet EIFD goals. Next slide, please. Allocation of tax increment revenue. So we mentioned the Community Investment Action Plan. A result of that effort, Measure G passed, the city was collecting tax increment revenues that went into Measure G Fund. With the, the EIFD, when the, the EIFD was formed, it created, the city created an EIFD fund to account for EIFD revenues and expenditures. The EIFD budget policy is crafted to maximize investment opportunities and flexibility for the city in its use of tax increment funds. EIFD law allows for the city to specify the portion of property tax increment to be dedicated to the EIFD fund in any given year. However, should EIFD revenues be used to support a bond issuance, there must be sufficient revenue allocation to that EIFD fund to cover that debt service and other related expenses. Resolution 24-2 stipulates that tax increment revenues will be directed to the EIFD fund to pay for the annual debt service and related EIFD bond issuance and reporting costs, such as auditing, annual reporting, bond, and legal counsel. All other tax increments will be directed to the Measure G Fund to pay for facilities and activities consistent with our Measure G criteria as outlined in our Community Investment Fund policy related to that Community Investment Action Plan. Improvements funded with EIFD bond proceeds will be recommended by the city council and considered by the Public Finance Authority for approval. Improvements funded with Measure G will be considered by the council through its biannual budget process, as vetted by staff as we're currently doing, based on our Measure G criteria. Next slide, please. Resolution 24-2 also includes a debt management policy. This is an administrative policy guiding the procedures and goals for the use of debt to finance city needs and improvements. This is really a mirrored policy of what the city currently has in place with a few minor edits that are highlighted in redline form. Many of the edits are just related to actual department or staff position changes over time, so kind of clarifying that, as well as adding in the EIFD as part of the legal authorizations and limitations section of the policy. Council will also be considering these changes to the debt service or the debt management policy. Slide. And lastly, this item also includes Resolution 24-3, which approves the EIFD fiscal year 24, 25 budget. In total, the annual appropriation is just over 6.3 million, as shown on this slide. And it includes a proposed appropriation of just a little more than $6 million for the I Street Bridge replacement project to fund right-of-way acquisition for the future bridge. Definitely a project that is of a community-wide significance. And there's also proposed appropriations for legal services and other annual EIFD administrative costs. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm also joined by a team of staff and consultants to help address any questions that come up as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Turning it to the commission, or before I do, I should ask, is there any public comments regarding this item?
We received no request to speak on this item.
Thank you. In that case, turning to the commission or the authority, are there any questions by authority members?
Madam Alcala? Thank you, Mr.. I just had a quick question. You mentioned legal costs. Would that be with in-house or is this something you're anticipating for outside legal counsel?
It can be both, depending on the service that, that we're using. It does include, we have the, the cost allocation that includes our in-house legal counsel, and then there are additional legal costs that may be needed for other items. I don't know, Roberta, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, the legal costs that you've seen on there, there are legal costs related to the validation action that we'll be talking about in the next item. So there's some of that. We've got our in-house legal counsel, and then we're also contracting with Lozano Smith. Konstantin Baronov used to work for our legal counsel. He's got a lot of history, was involved in the EIFD formation and all of our, our debt in the past, and so we have retained him to help with this process as well. So it's a mixture of outside counsel, our internal counsel, and then the costs related to the validation, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Thank you. And just for transparency, because the public often asks, I'm going to ask, what process do we use when we go for outside counsel? How do we approach that?
Well, yeah, in, in this case, we, we already have a selected internal counsel that, that we use, so we didn't go through a process for that. When we were looking into the process for issuing EIFD bonds, these are the, the first EIFD bonds in, in the state. And because we did a sole source in this instance, because we have a, a former attorney who has the institutional knowledge, who worked with us on the formation and has the expertise in that area, and so we did a sole source to retain the expertise of that firm.
Okay, thank you for the answer.
Any other questions from authority members?
Yeah, a quick question.
Please.
Thank you. On the budget, I think, I think my question, since this is so new and we're figuring this out as we go, our group, our authority, does not meet very often. When would we see our budget to actual report out for actual expenses? Do we even know?
Annual report?
Yeah, part of the annual report. So what we did at the first, the public hearing item that, that you had this evening, that was the annual report. So maybe as part of the annual report, or if there's something that happens throughout the year and that we need to address, there could be additional budget information provided at that time.
But typically, what I'm hearing is it's annually, so we would come back and figure out where we're at in a year from now.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll, I have a couple of questions, but first, thank you for the presentation. You know, I think this really gets to the heart of the budget policy, so I'm very excited to see how we're funding the infrastructure moving forward. Regarding this year's 24, 25 fiscal year budget, with the vast majority of it going to the I Street Bridge project, does that cover most of the outstanding expenses for the city, or are there additional funding needed to complete the start of the project?
For the I Street Bridge project, there's additional funding that is, is needed, and also additional funding anticipated to come in to support that project. But where we're at right now in the project is right-of-way acquisition that has to be completed within a certain timeframe. So this funding, we anticipated actually moving over to the project some time ago, but we were waiting to complete all of the other items before you tonight to take that formal action on the budget.
Does the roughly 6 million then cover most of the acquisition, or is there still outstanding for that, too? And the reason I ask, if I'm getting my numbers right, looking at the current revenue, we have about 6.3 million total in the EIFD fund, and we're making almost all of it go towards this acquisition, even very little left. So I was just curious, what was the reason for that amount?
Yeah, there, there, I could chime in on that. There's definitely, my understanding is there's definitely that amount of acquisitions uncovered by that, that revenue. I think you asked about, would there be additional revenue from the city pledged to that project? And the answer is yes. For construction, there's a cost share we'll have with the City of Sacramento. Kind of relates to the next item. We anticipate that some of that funding could come from the EIFD bonds if they're approved, so. But my understanding is the amount that's in the budget today is needed, 100% of it's needed for right-of-way acquisition.
No, thank you, Erin. And I guess then, you know, just getting really to the heart of the question then. So moving forward, is the anticipation that the tax increment revenue is going to go to Measure G or focus on debt service for the bond, given that I think we're exhausting most of the current funding for this allocation to the I Street Bridge project?
Oh, so I, I understand what you're saying now. So, so just a key distinction here. This is, this is one-time money that's been sitting in the EIFD for some time. It's not a annual amount that is now being spent on one project. So we're kind of, what we're doing is taking money that had been allocated previously to the EIFD budget for the I Street Bridge and moving it back to the city's control so it can be spent today for those right-of-way costs. The budget going forward, though, will be a mix of both debt service and also one-time money available for staff support and other activities that are funded out of Measure G. Hopefully that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, Chair, I completely forgot. Before I started my items, I think the city manager had something he wanted to say. He was probably trying to get my attention on this. Okay, the next item. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. In that case, is there a motion regarding the item?
I'll move.
I have a motion by member Solpezio Holt. It looks like a second by member Alcala.
Member Solpezio Holt?
Aye.
Member Alcala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez? Chair Hirsch?
Aye. The measure passes. Moving on then to item number seven, consideration of Resolution 24-4, authorizing the issuance and sale of EIFD bonds related actions.
I just like coming to the podium. I don't get to do anymore. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board members for being here tonight for this. I, I just wanted to open this item up as we're considering the bond issuance and just kind of do a little reminder of, of some context of, of why we're here and more so kind of what it means to the city in a, in sort of historic context. So in all of your orientations, I kind of gave the history of redevelopment in West Sacramento, but I think, just kind of putting it on record for the, for the thousands of people that are watching this meeting, it's, it's important to note that the City of West Sacramento was a model practitioner of redevelopment in California from the point of incorporating 1987 all the way till the end of redevelopment in 2012. So for 35 years, it was the key driver of positive change in the city through investing in infrastructure, led to the physical and economic transformation of the city, and especially in its, its riverfront districts. So when the state eliminated redevelopment in 2012, it was certainly a setback for that momentum, but it wasn't the end. And so Tracy kind of covered the history of, of the Community Investment Plan. I have to note publicly that John Robinson was right there with me as the co-author of that plan and was a key there. But property tax increment, what we're talking about tonight, especially the financing side of it, was the main funding source for infrastructure and other investments. It made redevelopment such a powerful tool here in West Sacramento and in other places in California. So as a result of our efforts to restore what we lost when, when redevelopment went away, the EIFD tool emerged as the, as the preferred alternative. And that was back in 2016, and, and we are, we were the first EIFD, which also makes sense to why we'll, we'll be the first one that's ready to issue bonds. And that's what we're here to do tonight. That's what it's all about. And I say all this just could because it is worth taking a moment to reflect on that history of the last 12 years since losing redevelopment and how far we've come. Tonight's really the culmination of that work, and we'll continue to do the work that the Redevelopment Agency did back then in driving that, that positive change through infrastructure investment and enabling lots of other things to happen that otherwise couldn't in the city. So for that, I, you know, it may not seem like, right here in this moment, but it is potentially one of the most monumental points in the city's history in terms of how we move forward. And so because of that, I want to thank you all for, for being on the board here to consider this initial bond issuance, but also the people behind me. None of them are actually from the public. They're all either staff. There's four departments represented, including my own, our Capital Projects Department, Economic Development, Housing, and Finance, but also our attorneys and our financial advisors that have been with us really since the start of this district. And so it's, it's through their work that we're here tonight and have on the table the option to go ahead with bond issuance. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to, I think, Roberta now to go through the item. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon. So Tracy and Erin provided the history of the EIFD, so I won't go into that. I'm going to keep this really brief and just focused on what we're trying to do and why. So first, the EIFD was established for the purpose of issuing debt to construct necessary infrastructure of a community-wide benefit and to pay for that debt using the tax increment generated on the increase in property values surrounding the investment. There is no shortage of infrastructure needs in the city. Some is, is not as competitive for grants or other external funding, but absolutely necessary. And the EIFD revenues are approaching a level where staff believes it's prudent to consider issuing bonds to fund these types of needs that, that sometimes don't have any other funding options. It's important to note that bonds would be issued by the EIFD and would not be an obligation of the city. And so as Erin mentioned, we were the first EIFD formed in the state. It's possible we could be the first to issue actual EIFD bonds in the state as well. Because of this, and because our EIFD was formed prior to the additional legislation which significantly changed the EIFD law, staff believes it's necessary to pursue a judicial validation action for which the purpose would be to validate, among other things, the EIFD, the financing structure, and the method of sale. the financing structure, and the method of sale for the bonds. So in order to file a judicial validation action, the board must first approve the resolution authorizing that EIFD to issue debt. We don't yet know the amount, uh, what amount of the debt will be. We have some ideas of what, what the amounts are gonna be, uh, on a phased issue. Uh, but we want, and we want this validation to apply to any future debt of the EIFD as well. So the amount on the resolution is simply the projection of total debt that could be issued based on the revenue projections for the life of the district at the time the EIFD was formed. So that number was 535 million. It's been inflated using CPI to today's dollars of 686,180,000. Um, as it stands, the first bond issue would likely be around 50, 55 million, uh, with about 50 or 52 million in, uh, project funds. So the outcome of the validation action will dictate how certain elements of the financing will need to be designed. As such, staff will return at a later date for specific approval of a particular bond issue, meaning we cannot and will not issue debt with, uh, this action. We will return for approval to issue debt in the future every time. So, uh, today, we are asking you to approve Resolution 24-4, which authorizes the sale and issuance of EIFD bonds in an amount not to exceed 686,180,000. Uh, authorize the execution and delivery of a fiscal agent agreement prescribing the terms and conditions of the bonds. Appoint Lozano Smith as Bond and Disclosure Counsel, and Del Rio Advisors as the municipal advisor in connection with the sale of the bonds, and authorize the initiation of a judicial validation action with respect to the EIFD and the bonds. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Roberta. Are there currently any questions from the authority? Seeing none, I'll...
No questions, but I have comments.
Okay. Do you want to comment, or should I see if there's any public comment first?
Whatever you want, Chair.
Let me see real fast if there's any public comment before bringing it back.
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Great. In that case, authority member, Solpizio Hall.
Uh, thank you, Chair Hirsch. Trying to get our titles correct with this new organization. Thank you, Roberta. Um, thank you, Tracy. Thank you to the city manager. Uh, I appreciate the city manager teeing this up and talking about the history. And it, you know, where we're at right now, what does making history feel like? It's taken a long time to get to this space, and I want to just thank everybody in the room. Thank you to our city manager. Thank you to staff. Thank you to our consultants. This has been years in the making. And to have this opportunity, a post-redevelopment, to find ways to fund important projects in our community and really change the face of what the community looks like and make quality of life better for all the residents is really exciting. And so I'm absolutely supportive of this. Um, I'm proud to be in the room and just want to thank everyone again for the time and the dedication to get us to where we're at.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from authority members? I'll say, I'll take the chair's privilege to say I echo authority member Solpizio Hall. I think this is a really, really big step. I want to thank Erin and all of the people in this room today and outside the room over the past many, many years have worked on this. When redevelopment went away, it was a pretty big loss for local government. I work in state government, so I know that. Um, and as a resident of the city, I know that as well. We have a lot of infrastructure needs. And I think that EIFD is a very creative way to have that stable source moving forward of infrastructure revenue. There's a lot of work that can be done in our city, and I'm excited to be here today. Just a question, really a restatement, just to be very clear about it. But you said there is absolutely no debt liability on the part of the city regarding the EIFD. Is that right?
Well, now you're gonna force me to look back to my legal and make sure that in none of those documents anywhere, it says that we're gonna have to have any debt. It is, there is no debt of the city. It is all EIFD, so...
I think that's a win. And then another question, just to be very clear and open about this. There is no increase in the percentage of taxes that are being used to fund the EIFD bonds. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is not a new tax. Uh, this is just growth in existing, in existing property tax base.
Again, I think that's another win. And then final question. So before any bond is actually issued, it will come back for the EIFD Public Finance Authority. Uh, so there's a chance for the members of the public to comment on it as well.
Absolutely, yes. After the validation action, we will be back before this board to move forward with issuing debt. You'll take action at that time, and the public will have an opportunity to weigh in as well.
Wonderful. That's three wins. I think it's great. And so at this time, if there's no other questions or comments from the authority, I'll see if there's a motion. Oh, actually, question.
Thank you, Chair. You just brought something up. So this outreach that's gonna be done, is it only to, um, the entire West Sacramento community or just the individuals who are actually in those zones where the, um, EIFD monies?
I'm gonna let Erin take that one.
Well, so the, the statutory requirements that you, uh, noticed to the, uh, I believe the property owners in the district, people are shaking their heads, yes. There is a, there is a more public-facing component of this, um, that is sort of, uh, you know, a reflection of the importance of it to the city. And so our communications team in, in our, in our office, um, we are planning to, you know, do our, our usual ways of reaching people, uh, just to sort of let them know why it's important. So don't have details on that at this time, but it's gonna be a little bit, little bit time between now and we actually go to, uh, uh, actual issuance of debt. Um, so we'll come up with some ways. We have a website for the, the EIFD and, uh, lots of other ways that we could reach people to inform them of why this matters, why this is important.
Thanks, thank you.
May I, one more question?
Please.
Um, uh, city manager Laurel, you just brought up something, um, which makes me think of conversations we've had with tax measures and letting folks know how money is being spent. When we decide as a council how the EIFD money is actually being spent and invested in the community, do we make a connection with the project and the EIFD funding, or is, um, it's separate?
So, uh, the anticipated plan for how we actually allocate, um, EIFD money once the bonds are issued is it would be through our normal CIP process is generally what we're, what we're thinking. Um, so we do that normally with the budget, but we could do, um, you know, that, that doesn't have to be with the budget. Um, so that would be a public meeting at the city council. Uh, would be the city council's discretion ultimately where, where the bond money gets placed in the projects. Um, so the, the, but Public Finance Authority will have their meeting, obviously, to, uh, consider issuance of debt, but that's not the end of the story there. There's still, uh, steps with the city council in terms of how we, um, actually appropriate money to project. So I, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, do we communicate with the public that, you know, this has been financed through the EIFD? Or is it just kind of wrapped into how, how we budget? This is, this is the first time we've ever done that, like...
Right.
Is the conversation, does the public need to know that this is the EIFD that's funding these projects?
Yeah, I think it, when you, when you reflect back on the fact that the, the public, um, did, you know, overwhelmingly support Measure G back in 2012, it is an important connection to make, much like when we, when we use tax measure funding. Um, we are actually in the process of, uh, creating new materials. So at the council's direction, actually, um, to kind of post signage and, and let people know that this project was funded by this measure, that measure. Um, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to take the similar approach to, uh, projects that are ultimately funded by EIFD funds and at least, um, you know, uh, bring it back to why Measure G, uh, was the, was the, was the, uh, the ballot measure that made it possible. So that's, that's good feedback. We'll, we'll take that into account as we also think about, uh, the sales tax measures.
Any other questions from the authority? All right, is there a motion? I have some of them. We have a motion by authority member Solpizio Hall. A second by authority member Perez.
Member Solpizio Hall?
Aye.
Member Okala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez? Chair Hirsch?
Aye.
The item passes. Thank you. Moving on then to General Administration Function Part Two, Executive Director Report.
I'm assuming that's me. Um, no, I don't have any report tonight. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure that's actually an official title. We'll, uh, we may make an agenda change, but no report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In that case, the report of Public Financing Authority Actions. I'm not sure if there is a report, but opening it up. Seen a lot of shaking of heads. I think we're good there. Moving on to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Motion and a second.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, member Solpizio Hall?
Aye.
Member Okala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez? Chair Hirsch?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the first EIFD meeting and looking forward to the next one.
Congratulations.